The majority of the board is present, therefore a quorum is present and the meeting is qualified to consider the agenda items. Tonight's flag salute will be led by the Memorial High School JR OTC under the direction of Colonel Greg Barak. Please stand as we prepare for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the posting of the colors.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join the Memorial High School JR OTC Color Guard. And pledge allegiance and remain standing for the posting of colors. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ladies and gentlemen, please be seated.
I have the honor of introducing the Memorial High School JR OTC Color Guard this evening with the instructors being Colonel Greg Barak, Command Sergeant Major Kenneth Powell, Color Guard under direction of Sergeant Major Powell, Principal Darren Schmidt who's here with us this evening, the students, pledge leader Cadet Felipe Medina, Color Guard composed of Cadet Tasha Robb who is a senior, Cadet John Thurman, Cadet Caitlin Smith also a senior, and Cadet Gabe Montanez. Quickly, I'll remind everyone that the Memorial Charger Color Guard teams have competed in the National Drill Competition at Daytona Beach, Florida every May for the last 20 years and have been the only JR OTC program that has consistently done so. Last May, our Lady Charger Color Guard placed runner-up in the nation. Memorial JR OTC has competed in seven drill meets so far this year in Oklahoma, Texas, and Kansas, earning 22 first-place trophies, seven second place, and two third-place trophies for a total of 31 trophies. They will compete again in Texas during spring break and again at Nationals in May. We want to especially recognize two members of last year's national runner-up team and graduating seniors Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Tasha Robb and Commander of the Charger Battalion and Cadet Major Caitlin Smith, Operations Officer. Both will have competed as varsity color guard members all four years at Memorial. Good luck on spring break and thank you for always making Tulsa Public Schools so very proud. Thank you again for being here. Thank you all for being here. If there's anybody that has an empty seat by them, raise your hand in case there's folks who are still looking for a seat. So there's a couple of seats up here. Okay, thank you all. We will begin the meeting with just like a few details. I want to remind everybody that if you want to address the board about something that is on the agenda this evening, then you need to sign up with our Board Clerk, Ms. Cindy Hutchings, right down at the end of the board table on my right. There is a five-minute limit and we will be strict with that, given the number of speakers that we have and the packed agenda that we have tonight, so please respect your fellow speakers and keep to the five minutes. You'll note as we go through the agenda tonight, you'll see we start out with the consent agenda. Those items have come before the board before and had a full discussion, and then we'll go to our action items and then information. Dr. Gist will talk a little bit more about that, just for people. It takes a long time to internalize how all of this works, but it's good to kind of remind everybody so they don't think we're just passing things without any kind of discussion, particularly on the consent agenda, which is the first thing you'll see. Before I consider a motion to adopt the agenda, are there any changes this evening, Dr. Gist?
There are no changes tonight, Madam President.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion then to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I'll call for the vote, Ms. Shelton.
Aye.
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 I want to recognize all of you for coming. Thank you for being here, participating in democracy, local. It's just great to have this engagement and we appreciate everyone being here and supporting Tulsa Public School kids by being here. We do have some special presentations this evening, and we're going to start out with a resolution, a draft resolution that the board has formulated in thinking about the conversations going on around the state about the teachers advocating for their salaries and education funding, and I will let the resolution speak for itself. I'm going to ask Ms. Keller to read that for us.
Thank you, President Schreiber. I think we all agree this is a very important moment and a very important resolution in the steps that we take as we move forward. So, I'm honored to read this resolution. Whereas the Tulsa Public School Board of Education recognizes the chronic underfunding of public school education and continued cuts for more than a decade, and whereas the Tulsa School Board of Education is a witness to the consequences of this chronic underfunding and sees the victims in our teachers, staff, students, family, community, and state, and whereas the Tulsa Public School Board of Education has supported and worked for solution after solution to fund teacher pay raises and common education, only to see the legislature unsuccessfully find common ground and pass legislation comprehensively addressing this emergency, and whereas no one has worked harder nor waited longer for a raise and for resources in the classroom nor sacrificed more than our teachers, and whereas the Tulsa School Board of Education on behalf of our students and families cannot allow this crisis to continue through another legislative session, we support all measures taken by our classroom teachers to demand the necessary funding for a meaningful pay raise and adequate education funding, and whereas we are confident our parents, families, caregivers, faith leaders, and congregations, business leaders, laborers, teachers, families, and school district administrators, neighbors, and friends will gracefully fill the gap and make the sacrifices necessary where our teachers advocate for what they need to educate our children and secure the future of Oklahoma in the way that they see fit. Be it resolved that the Tulsa Board of Education is in full support of the legislation and advocacy plan endorsed by our teachers and stands ready to take any steps necessary to improve conditions for our teachers, including a district-wide suspension of classes. The Tulsa Public School Board of Education implores the Oklahoma State Legislature to work urgently on behalf of the children and families in our state to take swift and meaningful action to develop a viable plan to pay teachers the professional salaries that they deserve and to provide the additional support that they need, resolved this fifth day of March, excuse me, 2018.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. We will take action on that resolution at our next meeting, but I think Dr. Gist has a follow-up to that that I'll let her introduce.
Yes, thank you Board Member Keller and President Schreiber. In addition to the resolution that the board is going to act upon at their meeting next week, we've been doing a significant amount of work with our Tulsa Classroom Teachers Association, and we also are very grateful to have the support of our Tulsa Council of PTAs. And so what we have tonight over here is a commitment card, and I'm going to read the language so that you'll have it. And we're all going to, we're going to sign this commitment card, President Schreiber on behalf of the board, Tina Kaminski, who is here with members of her board, on behalf of the Tulsa Council of PTAs, Patty Ferguson Palmer, President of the Tulsa Classroom Teachers Association, who has a number of board members and delegates who are here tonight, as well as Vice President Shawna Mott Wright. So we will sign this indicating our shared commitment to work that you'll see is reflective of the language in the resolution, but I'm going to read you the commitment that we are making. We must turn around Oklahoma's chronic underinvestment in public education. Our average teacher salary ranks lowest in the nation, and our educators struggle every day to make ends meet. Enough is enough. Oklahoma educators must be paid the professional salaries they deserve and our schools must be adequately funded. We, the undersigned, fully support our teachers in taking necessary job actions to urge state legislators to restore funding to public education and increase teacher salaries. We commit to taking decisive action with our colleagues and peers in other Oklahoma communities and districts, and will support our teachers in job actions such as working the contract, participating in organized walkouts, and engaging in a statewide shutdown of our public education system. We urge our state leaders to take immediate action to reinvest in our schools, properly compensate our teachers, and ensure that our schools remain open to serve Oklahoma's thousands of students and their families. So President Schreiber and Ms. Kaminski and Ms. Ferguson Palmer, if you'll join us, we will sign and show our shared commitment to this statement.
our teachers to get what they need to educate our students. We are going to move from, actually one more presentation. Yeah. Yes, Dr. Gist.
Oh, okay.
I'm just about to get to you.
Okay.
I was just making sure. I was going to say we're going to move to Dr. Gist's two presentations this evening that she's going to talk about now. She forgot how to wait her turn.
I'm just excited about this one. So our first presentation tonight, or our student presentation anyway, is from our Booker T. Washington Men of Power Leadership Group. And so many of you are familiar with the incredible work that the Men of Power group has done over a number of years at Booker T. Washington, and we're grateful that that work is continuing with the support of Principal Woolridge. And so for those of you who may not know, Men of Power is a manhood development program designed to address critical issues faced by high school students, particularly African-American males. They have guest speakers, group dialogue, community service, and interactive media. These are the different vehicles in which young men grow individually and collectively. Once young men successfully complete the program, they're designated as men and will then be charged with the responsibility to serve as mentors for the next group of young men who enter the program. The personal road of discovery promises to be one of benefit to individuals, families, and generations to follow, so we're really grateful to have them here and we look forward to hearing more.
My name is Isaac Stevens. I'm the president of Men of Power. I'm a senior at Booker T. Washington High School. This is my Vice President Donald Brodnax right here, Member-at-Large John Benson. I have another Member-at-Large Tyler Jackson. Today what we're going to talk about is what our organization really does and how it helps in the communities and the school system. So first off, the first thing that we believe in doing is enlightening the mind of the largely minority groups that we have. Every Thursday mornings, we meet, we wear our shirts and ties, and we just have a meeting about certain things that's going on, such as current events, and we talk about it, and I like to call it a safe place for us to speak out about what's going on. And a part of that is knowing like the self-worth part of it, as if we're like going through certain things, like circumstances in the black community, because most of the group is African-American. So we're just trying to understand what's going on and how can we change it. And so I feel like the self-worth part of it was the biggest part, because to know where you're going, you got to know where you come from. And so I think it was just a big part of understanding the rich history that we come from and the shoulders that we stand on. It's so huge, and that's why we can be here today in front of all of you all. And so next I have my Vice President Donald here to speak about empowering the individual.
Hello, I'm Donald Brodnax. I'm a junior at the Booker T. Washington High School. I'm also a member of the football team of Men of Power African-American Society and Student Council. And when we work, we have our meetings every week, like you said, at eight in the morning. We also have communication skills workshops where we take up each member in front of the group and have them, they have to stand up and say something about themselves, what organization they're in outside of Men of Power, and just expand on that so we can break that first barrier, especially for freshmen on the first day of our first meetings. And we work with fraternity, Sigma Chi Phi fraternity, and they help us as far as our college planning goes. And so we work with them with our going off into careers. Like me and myself, I wanted to be in pharmacy. We have a pharmacist within the fraternity group, so we can shadow them. I know Tyler wants to do business. We have businessmen within the fraternity that we can work with and shadow, and that's all I have.
Good evening. I'm John Benson. I'm a sophomore at the Booker T. Washington High School. I'm part of Men of Power, and I am also part of the football team. In our Chapter III, we like to educate our beings and educate ourselves. So in our meetings, we talk about our development process of being a man, how starting from a boy to becoming a man, and each skill that we learn in our ways. And we also talk about things that go around in the school, such as being in relationships and supporting the relationship person and respecting women.
Good evening. My name is Tyler Jackson, and I'm part of Men of Power. I'm a junior with African-American Society and with the track team as well. And we wear shirts and tie once a week just to develop our image in the school, because that's very important to us as an organization. And along with being a part of Men of Power, we are mentored by Sigma Chi Phi, like you said earlier, and financial management, they teach us about that, and also with that time management as well. With that being said, with also being life skills and hygiene, such as grooming, wearing tie, learning how to tie a tie, is very important when being a part of Men of Power. Thank you.
I thank you all for your time this evening, and we're going to end off with our creed that we recite every Thursday morning before our meetings. I am strong, I am dedicated, I am disciplined, I am determined, I can be who I decide to be. I will not accept mediocrity, I will sell academically, I will contribute socially, and I will grow spiritually. Why? Because I'm a man of power.
Very exciting work happening there, and we know there's a Young Women's Leadership Group as well, so really exciting, exciting things happening, and we appreciate you all being here and sharing with us. Next, we're going to hear from a couple of our Equity Ambassadors. Summer Brasic from Hamilton under the leadership of Principal Carr, and Andrea Fields from Sequoia under the leadership of Principal Nero. And you might recognize these two teachers who are kind of famous from one of our very widely shared, very widely shared videos talking about the important work of the Equity Ambassadors. Ms. Fields and Ms. Brasic began working with the Equity Ambassadors last year, and through the program they've gained insights that they've shared on the video, and I'm sure we'll hear tonight, about their own teaching, their own personal identities, and their work in the classroom and as leaders in the community. And by exploring racial identity through conversations and dialogue, our ambassadors are preparing to look at their teaching practices through a critical lens, and they're here to tell us more about that and to share the work of the ambassadors. So welcome and thank you for being here.
Thank you so much for having us. I'm going to talk to you guys about three parts of Equity Ambassadors and what it has meant to me. It's going to be the personal identity work, the supportive learning community that we have, and then the transfer and what it's going to look like going forward. So as far as the personal identity work goes, I kind of went into Equity Ambassadors thinking that I already had an equity mindset and that I was just going to like sharpen my tools, but really diving in with this community helped me realize that the personal identity work journey is an ongoing process, and it's slow, and it's uncomfortable, and it's going to take a really long time. And what's great about going through that is, I'm going to move into the part about the learning and supportive community, is that you're going through it with other people. So having that supportive community, what we do is we engage in attentive listening dyads where we listen with one another, we grow with one another, and none of us are satisfied with where we are, and we're all trying to help one another get better, which is a really important part of Equity Ambassadors. And then the transfer moving forward, now that we're in our second year, we are all being, we're being really vulnerable. We're looking at our own teaching practices, looking at our data for points of like contention or points where we realize that we are not being equitable in our practices, and it's helping us develop a critical lens toward our teaching, because having positive intentions is not enough. And so we're all going to bring our own equity dilemmas, and I'm really grateful for being a part of this program, and I think that to not engage in equity conversations with all of our teachers would be an injustice to our students, and I'm going to pass it over to Andrea. Thank you.
Good evening. Since starting the equity work, I've come to realize the importance of cultural competence. I have developed adaptations and now differentiate my service delivery to reflect an understanding of cultural diversity. Walking to the classroom now, I really value diversity, whether it be in academic performance or social interactions. Getting to know the students, their families, and the community that I serve, they are the cornerstone to student success, and I realize that this has enhanced the relationships that I have, as well as brought up student engagement, which is really important and what we're looking for. I am currently working, I'm proud to say, I'm currently working on my PhD at OU in instructional leadership and advocacy. The leadership course coincides with the equity work that I'm doing for TPS, because it encourages me to gather other professionals, create learning communities, and then really focus on cultural competence. Thank you.
That concludes our special presentations. Thank you both so much for your leadership and for being here to share more with us tonight.
Yes, thank you. We will move to item D to approve the minutes of February 20th, 2018, regular meeting and the February 20th, 2018 special meeting of the board. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved. Second.
I'll call for the vote, Ms. Shelton.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm so sorry. Who is the?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Minutes approved, and now we'll move to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Before I call for the vote, are there any questions on any of the items in the consent See no questions from the board, I'll call for the vote. Ms. Shelton.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye. That will move us to our action agenda, item F. And I'll begin by reading the recommendation regarding item F. This is our only action item this evening. F1, recommendation, approve the expansion of KIP Tulsa Academy College Preparatory Charter School to include a high school program, program opening in the 2018-2019 school year and continuing for a total of five years. The high school program called KIP Tulsa University Prep Charter School will serve 125 students per grade level and will grow one grade level per year to a total of 480 students in the 2021-2022 school year. For the purposes of renewal decisions, KIP Tulsa University Prep Charter School shall be reviewed on the same timeline as, but separate from, KIP Tulsa Academy College Preparatory Charter School. This approval shall be subject to a mutually agreeable and fully executed renewal contract between the parties. It's further recommended that prior to opening in the 2018-2019 school year, the district shall ensure that KIP Tulsa University Prep Charter School's facility meets state and local standards for safety and accreditation and is sufficient to deliver academic, to deliver an academic program set forth in the approved application. Finally, I'll read the rationale. The KIP Tulsa Academy College Preparatory Charter School contract was renewed in January 2018 based on their performance against Tulsa Public Schools Charter Performance Framework. Their track record for success combined with a comprehensive plan for high school expansion provides adequate evidence of KIP Tulsa's readiness to serve students in grades nine through 12. First, I'll entertain a motion to approve the item, and then we'll have some discussion. Is there a motion to approve item F1?
I approve.
So moved.
That moves us to discussion, and before I do that, I'd like to call on Dr. Gist to provide comments.
Thank you, Madam President. At the February 5th board meeting, we presented a recommendation to approve the KIP High School expansion. And at that meeting, the board requested additional information about the facility in which the school would be operating. So over the past month, we've been working closely with both KIP as well as the Portfolio Committee of the Board of Education, and we wanted to ensure that the proposed site was appropriate for educating students. And so this has included a presentation by KIP to the Portfolio Committee during which they were able to ask questions. We also changed the language of the recommendation to explicitly require that KIP's proposed private facility must meet the local and state standards for school safety and adequacy, and also we're including facility standards in the contract into which KIP will enter should the expansion be approved by the board. So we made a number of steps to respond to the questions that we heard from the Board of Education members. And I want to just say that I appreciate the diligence of the Portfolio Committee, who's been very thorough in this process, and I want to turn it over to Andrea Castaneda to answer any questions the board members might have, and so we'll see if there are some, unless you have anything additional before we do that.
No, I mostly want to leave time for your questions, but I will just quickly off. offer some context, Madam President, members of the board. It was about a month ago that you last heard some information presented about KIP as an expansion applicant, so I just wanted to bring some of those back to the top of our minds. KIP has been a trusted North Tulsa educational partner for over a decade, and over that time, they have demonstrated their ability to have transformational impact on students' lives. And a few quick highlights, when we look at KIP's academic growth, it is at least, and is sometimes significantly greater than twice the district average for similar students. They also have dramatically successful college matriculation and persistence results when compared to their urban peers. They have some of the highest value-added data in, in our system, and I think, you know, most importantly, one of the things that we can see is that KIP is remarkably successful at doing something that our, our city and our state and in most arguments, our country is not great at doing, which is providing an excellent academic experience for African-American students. I think that these outcomes are the reason that we bring an expansion recommendation to you, but of course, we want to entertain the opportunity to answer all of the rigorous questions you have about their application.
Ms. Marshall.
In listening to Ms. Castaneda and others, and the statement just made, it's quite alarming when we say that KIP is able to do and provide an education for our Tulsa children, our African-American children, an education that our own system cannot provide. That is quite disheartening when we say that our own academic system has failed our children to the point that we have to rely on a charter system to come in and educate our system. However, my, my questions or my, my concern with this whole application process, I'm not dealing with the academics that KIP provides. My, my alarm, my questions stem from the fact that we're dealing with the location, with the, with the building that they have submitted. First of all, if you remember on the February 5th meeting, I questioned the fact that we did not have a location submitted. Now, we have a location. When I look at the paperwork that KIP submitted, it says, "safe, structured, and nurturing environments." Our schools provide physical and emotional security, so our students love school and maximize their learning. I went over to the site and I walked the halls of the current structure, and I'm somewhat concerned based on our meeting with Mr. McCray and the responses to the questions that the Portfolio Committee had. Simple things in reference to even the restrooms, I asked the questions about the restrooms. It was indicated that there were two sets of restrooms for the students, two in the west wing and two in the east wing. Well, when I interviewed the current occupants of that school who will co-lease that building, one set of those restrooms are, they are specified and will be in control of the other occupants and won't be available to the school, which leads me to know that only one set of restrooms will be open to the school. So, my concern goes back to whether this, this site that's being proposed is going to be even viable for a school site for children. The restrooms that were proposed that would be utilized by adults, they are located in office space currently inhabited by current occupants that lease that building and have no intention of leaving because they are in an active lease. I just want to know that the plan is very well thought out. I understand that this district has been in a long relationship with KIP. I'm not arguing the point that KIP educates. I'm not arguing or belittling what they can accomplish when it comes to education. My problem is, when I ask a question, what are you going to do, and when I hear, "we'll just make it work," please understand me and hear me. The children in North Tulsa have been served up so much, "we'll make it work," to, they have been cast into a cycle of failure to thrive, and failure to thrive children, all they can do is die, and that's why they are in an education pipeline to prison. So, I need some definitive answers as to what we're going to do and what, if this building is going to be acceptable. The space in that building is not acceptable. There are, there are occupants already in the building that are leasing that building, parts of that building is already closed off. And I think that there are, I think that this situation needs to be revisited. I don't think that this board needs to vote on this tonight. I think that it would be a disservice to my district, District 3, the children, the constituents of District 3, but as we see, when we talk about the fact that charter schools are over and over placed in District 3, that there has been a disservice over and over again, and that's why we're asking for another charter school in District 3. And I'm, I'm upset tonight. I am upset tonight, and the constituency of District 3 is upset. I got a call tonight, and just like I told the caller, I'm listening to parents that have supported KIP, I'm listening to parents that don't support KIP, I'm listening to people who don't have children in school, I'm listening to people that do have people, children in school. I'm listening to the constituency, and we have a problem, and we don't need to rush into this because there are questions that have not been answered. Thank you.
Ms. Castaneda, do you want to respond to some of the specific concerns?
I do think that it's, it's a good point to pull out one of the specific actions that we took on the basis of some of these concerns, which is that we have stipulated in the motion that in order for this approval to go all the way through to school opening, the facility has to meet state and local accreditation standards. It has to be certified as appropriate for a school building and have a certificate of occupancy that demonstrates that it is adequate for that purpose, and we will further affix all of those standards to the contract that we execute should the expansion be approved. Those are all a layer of safeguards that help ensure that some of the most grave concerns raised by Board Member Marshall can be addressed through the period between now and school opening. We absolutely agree that strong authorizing practices demand adequate facilities, safe facilities, appropriate to the educational program, and those are the standards that will be reflected. They're referenced in the motion, they'll be reflected in the contract, and they will be monitored up through and to school opening.
Ms. Keller.
Ms. Castaneda, you mentioned that they, they would be reviewed, what, or rather, who will be responsible for making certain that those standards are met before the school opens in August, and what will be the repercussions if they are not?
So, this will be, as a staff, we will monitor it, we'll also do it in conjunction with our facilities and bond team. A number of the standards are also reflective of state standards, and there are municipal inspections that ensure that those are met. So, for example, certificates of occupancy, health and safety certification, all of that will be done by municipal and state partnerships. And the ramifications, if they don't meet those, those standards for adequacy, they would be unable to open.
Ms. Marshall.
I believe, long before we even approved this, even with all of that put in place, this board needs to make an effort, if it's nothing but the Portfolio Board members. We need to walk that site. A hands-on approach has gotten North Tulsa in bad shape, and we need to walk that site. I think we need to walk that site now as a, as a subcommittee and look at it the way it is today. If this board decides to approve it, and then after the fact, we need to walk it and see what was actually done to that building, but we need to take a greater interest in what's happening to our children, whether it's in Tulsa Public Schools proper or charters that we are authorizing, because it is our children, our children, that are suffering, that are not being educated or that are being placed in harm's way. We have to take a more hands-on approach. It's more than shuffling papers and reading reports.
Thank you. Are there any further questions from the board? Ms. Shelton?
Comments? No questions.
Thank you.
And this has been a month of wrestling for me with my own educational philosophy. What do I think about charter expansion in Tulsa? And I could come up with a good rationale in terms of equity to vote yes or no. I will be voting yes tonight, but I want you to hear me out as I, I want to walk through a few of the things I've wrestled with because I think it's important for us as a community to really talk about this as we move forward in the future. I was initially uncomfortable with the timing in terms of a state funding crisis, a teacher shortage, looking at a lack of resources in Tulsa and not wanting our other high schools to be losing students and teachers and resources to a new KIP High School. Also, we've seen recent progress at McLean in terms of attendance and graduation rate. I don't want that to be jeopardized in any way. And also, we have a new chief of design and innovation. Andrea is with us now, but we've not had time as, as district leadership to put together a really robust strategy around charter expansion and how do charters fit with destination excellence. So, my initial reaction was, can KIP wait? Does it have to happen right now? And was opposed to it on those grounds. I've also, though, I was challenged a month ago in a board meeting, Mr. Bright challenged us to finish reading this book that he had given to all of us, and I appreciated that reminder, and so have been studying this chronology, 163 pages of a chronology of education in North Tulsa. And I think it's important for us to think not only of the immediate context of this vote, but the historical context. So, if you would just oblige for a couple minutes as I walk through some, some highlights of what brings us to this moment and this decision for kids in North Tulsa. 1954, the Supreme Court upholds Brown versus Board of Education. 1968, the U.S. Attorney General critiques TPS for not having integrated, so 14 years later, we still hadn't acted on that. At that point, we come up with a plan, one-third of all teachers at North Tulsa schools should be white, and so then we transferred all other African-American teachers out of North Tulsa, distributed them throughout the system. I imagine that we transferred a lot of high-performing teachers out of North Tulsa at that point and sent them to white schools in South Tulsa. In the 1970s, we opened magnet schools in North Tulsa in order to attract white students to come, so Booker T became a magnet in 1973, Carver became a magnet school. Five of our elementary schools were actually magnet schools at that time as well. But to bring African-American students south, we had a compulsory busing program. So, in 1975 to 76, 400 black high school students were in our forced busing program headed south, whereas no white students in Tulsa were needing to be, or were part of a forced busing program, so that was inequitably put on the, the shoulders of our African-American students. In 1983, we patted ourselves on the back, look, we've done a great job with our magnet programs, and we asked the courts to no longer monitor us. The courts agreed that, yes, we'd become a unitary district and we no longer had to make efforts to integrate. So, at that point, we closed our, our magnet schools, our elementary magnet schools on the north side, and they reverted back to being neighborhood schools. Since that time in the 80s, we've had numerous plans and task forces that Cubes goes into great detail in, but just to list some names, this is all since 1981. The North Side Schools Plan, the North Side Task Force, North Side Priority Schools, School Consolidation Plan, Project Main Street, Operation Outreach, the Advisory Board for High-Challenged Youth, Project Focus, the Tulsa Project, McLean High School Improvement Plan, the McLean Initiative, Tulsa School for Science and Technology, the Comprehensive Reform Model Process, North Tulsa Community Schools Advisory Committee, North Tulsa Public Schools Proposal, North Tulsa Plan, Project Schoolhouse. As I'm reading through all of this, it was heartbreaking to see times when plans were, they looked good on paper but were perhaps not given the resources they needed to succeed, times when it seemed things were going well, and either because of a change in a principal or administration, progress was halted, times when the community came up with a great recommendation that was not heeded by district leaders. So, in light of all of this context, I was reminded of Martin Luther King's words in Letter from Birmingham Jail, saying, "Perhaps it is easy for those who have never felt the stinging darts of segregation to say, 'wait.'" He goes on, "There comes a time when the cup of endurance runs over, and men are no longer willing to be plunged into the abyss of despair. I hope, sirs, you can understand our legitimate and unavoidable impatience." So, personally, I feel challenged to not say to all the families sitting out there, "Wait until our legislature adequately funds education, wait until we come up with a great plan for North, North Tulsa." There's been 60 years of waiting and plans. North Tulsa students deserve access to what KIP is offering. KIP is offering a college prep education available to all regardless of prior academic achievement, prior behavior or attendance records, and North Tulsa students deserve that. So, I, I want to thank KIP for your continued commitment. I did want to make a couple quick comments. The elephant in the room is that regardless of how we vote tonight, there will likely be a KIP High School because of charter law in Oklahoma, right? KIP could go to Langston University, KIP could go to the State Board of Education and be authorized. I do want to say that KIP has been a strong partner for Tulsa Public Schools, and I believe it should be part of our family, but if a low-quality charter application is presented to us, we really have very little room to negotiate and to say, "We'll only authorize you if you locate in this part of town or serve this, these grades or change this about your model." I do believe that it's in the best interest of Tulsa students for locally-elected school boards to authorize charters, public charter schools, for those charters to be overseen by education professionals rather than by universities or by a distant state board of education. So, that's something we have no control over, that would need to change at the legislative level, but just wanted to make that, that comment. It was very clear to me during all of this that that's a troublesome or problematic part in our charter law. I did want to also say that I don't believe that opening more charter schools or more magnet programs even is how we will get to equity in Tulsa Public Schools. Our most vulnerable students are students who have very specialized needs, are students who are in vulnerable situations in terms of housing, income, transportation, those who do not have an adult advocate in their lives. Those students will always be served by neighborhood schools, almost always served by neighborhood schools, and will not be applying to or getting into a charter school or a magnet school that requires a certain level of access to information and to parent involvement. And so, I want to clearly say that we are, we can't judge equity or evaluate ourselves as a district by our high-performing charters or our high-performing magnet schools. We're only as strong as our neighborhood schools. We have a long way to go in terms of having high-performing neighborhood schools, and we can't give up focusing on those schools. Cubes has been calling for a long time for a deeper root cause analysis, and perhaps this is the time for us to look at, what are the systems, the history, the context that has brought us to where we are today for schools that have been struggling for many years, and are we really addressing the causes or just symptoms of those causes? And then finally, just wanted to say to the KIP leadership, this is an exciting moment. It's my understanding that you're implementing a new best practices model that's been put together after many years of learning across the country of what works well in high school. So, my encouragement to you, I think that's great for Tulsa kids to have that learning, but also encouraging you to keep Tulsa kids first, right? If there's aspects of that model that don't end up fitting our community well, that Tulsa kids come first, proving a model comes after that. I think that's important for us as a board to hold you accountable in keeping our kids first and all of that. Thank you for your service, and I wish you the best. I hope that KIP Tulsa High School graduates stay in Tulsa or come back to Tulsa and help make our city a more equitable place for kids to grow up in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shelton. We have We have several speakers on this item. Call Mr. Bright to come forward and speak, please.
Madam President, Dr. Gist, board members. Where is this KIP location, please? Where is it? What's the address? You getting ready to vote on something you don't even know where it's going to be located? Are you serious? Do you realize that McLean to Langston Hughes Academy, which is a high school, is almost 2 and 1/2 miles? Depending on where KIP is located, in about a three-mile radius, you'll have four schools, high schools. That's including Booker T. Now, I've been told that we can probably expect two more high schools to be located in this area. What are we doing here? What are we doing here? The last meeting, I talked exactly what Ms. Shelton said. I agree wholeheartedly with Mrs. Marshall has said and had put forth as something to be done. We wouldn't be having these conversations. The context is that why has McLean languished in that low-performing mediocrity for generations? Do you hear me? Generations. There would not need, there would be no need for four high schools. Three of them are application schools within a three-mile radius. Are you serious? Are you serious? No, because you're giving more discussions over the years that I've been here about charter schools than you have about public schools. You have. And it's not their fault. It's not their fault. But our children who are going to McLean, who have schools of choice like Hawthorne, like Anderson, they're getting ground to dust. But I don't hear that. You're quoting out of a book that we put together, took 2 and 1/2 years. The meat and heart of that is, is the context, not just what buildings we were in or what programs. It was the mindset, it was the paradigms, it was the worldview that were predicated upon what? White, middle-class values. It had nothing to do with African-Americans. Do you hear what I'm saying? We talk about culturally relevant and responsive. Let's be real, we have to talk about institutionalized racism, and we have to talk about white privilege. There's no accident that McLean's always been there and that African-Americans throughout the district and even down in Oklahoma City, all the way down through. So let's talk about that seriously. You're going to have about four high schools jammed up in one area. Are you serious? Yes, you are. That's the unfortunate part about it, because you glaze over. You have so many whatever emotional, professional deposits in the direction in which this district is going, when anybody says anything, you get defensive. You don't even hear me now. You don't hear me. Listen until we face why it's necessary for KIP to be located where it's going. Not questioning their intent, but why. There's a young lady that stood here before you, was touting KIP. She said, "The reason why I have my child at KIP is because of the lack of quality that's diminishing in the district." You didn't hear that. Each one of you starts smiling. And I'm saying, are they serious? Did you hear what she just said? That the rise of charter schools is because, and a direct cause in effect, because of the failure of the Tulsa Public Schools? Now, I don't... Well, not a lot of people clapping. Is it real? What's happening? If I'm lying, you tell me. Look at your results. Look at your results. Look at your own data. Children getting passed along who are not prepared for the next grade, where are they? Asked up at McLean, Tista One. Children coming in there reading five years, or five grades below. Same thing in math, all the way down through the feeder pattern. Why is that? That's been going on longer than some of those principals have been alive. Talk to what's going on over there at the McLean grade center. The same thing. So look, don't fool us. Don't fool us.
Thank you, Mr. Bright.
She's got it. Thank you, Ms. Marshall.
Calling Mr. Travis Stallings.
I was here at the last meeting when KIP brought up. I'm very tied in. My girlfriend now, four years, has taught at KIP. I came up through Tulsa Public Schools. I went through SOG, went to Byrd, graduated from Memorial High School. I love this city of Tulsa. KIP is not a shot in the dark. KIP High School is not some flash-in-the-pan idea somebody had overnight and brought it before you. KIP is a proven commodity. It has results that you can look at that you cannot deny how successful that they have been in the history that they have been here. To deny KIP High School is to deny kids another route, another opportunity to be successful. There's always... The shortcomings of Tulsa Public Schools has been long noted, and everybody can see it, and that is what it is. But the fact remains that you have an opportunity to give kids another route to go to college to be successful in life from what they have now. And you can argue over the location of it. You may argue the merits of whether the timing is right or not. The timing is never going to be perfect. Anybody knows that the timing to make a big change, to do something that can make a difference, if you wait for the perfect time, it will never happen. If you have a plan and you have the dynamic leadership that KIP possesses, and you have a location, you have the opportunity to do it, and you have the support of the community to do it, then take that chance while you have the opportunity. It's never going to come around. If you wait, all that's going to happen is more kids are going to fall through the cracks. Time and time again, it happens. If you wait, kids will suffer. Kids have paid the price long enough. I've coached football at Memorial for the last five years. The amount of kids that we get from North Tulsa because they don't have any other options up there and that they are far behind in their own education system, Lord knows where they would be if they had a KIP high school to go to. Those kids are only going to be a return investment in that community. If they have something that they can take pride in that drives them to give back to that area, it's only going to further help everybody in that neighborhood. But you have to give them that route to get there. You cannot deny them based on, "What are we going to do about McLean? What about Booker T? Why are there too many high schools up there?" You have to give them the opportunity, and KIP is giving them that opportunity. But you have to be willing to take that chance. Don't deny it over facilities. I promise you, if their response is, "We'll find a way to make it work," I trust no group more so than this group right here. Because I see the hours that they put in, day and night, up before the sun rises and back home long after that sun has gone down. Their summer vacation lasts about two weeks, I think. If you knew these teachers, if you knew the leadership that exists within this system, you cannot deny this high school. You can't do it. North Tulsa, the entire city of Tulsa, will be better for having this high school than without it, and I'll promise you that much. For whatever my word is worth, these individuals, I promise you, will not let these kids down. But to deny that high school, you're cutting off your nose to spite your face. Don't do that to these kids. They deserve better, and I promise you, KIP can give them better.
You're going to run out the clock?
I'm just going to kneel on it. Guys, this is Monday. We've got a long week ahead if we don't pass this school.
Ms. Velvet Watts to speak regarding KIP.
Good afternoon, or should I say, good evening, everybody? My name is Velvet Brown Watts, and I am one of the occupants in the building. Our organization is supporters of families with sickle cell disease. We are an organization that is contracted not only with the state Oklahoma Healthcare Authority, but also with HERSA. And so we serve Tulsa Public Schools students. There are several of us that are in the building. And what I want people to understand is, I want KIP to expand. I just don't think this is the building. Because we have four other community agencies on that one side. Two of them are counseling agencies, which are also in Tulsa Public Schools. One is also a new agency that moved in to help struggling youth. That's right behind our office. And so if we had to move, we just moved in the building. So our contract will not be up for a year. We're under contract with the people of the building. And so I just want everybody to know that and be aware that we're watching to kind of see what happens, because we too are in that building. And if, say, the school needed the whole building, we have one agency that's been there five years. We have other agencies that are moving in as we speak. And so I just want to make sure that location is very important to wherever they may expand. I'm not sure, as I said, it's this building. ADA bathrooms, there's one in the building. Bathrooms on the side that I'm on, if they only took one side of the bathrooms, it's only one girls, one boys. That's it. So those are some things that people may want to think about and be aware of. When they talked about the adult bathrooms, those are in my office. Can't use those. Sorry. I have clients in and out, and I deal with health information. So we're pretty close, tied up on what we do. I'm just trying to think about some of the other people in that building so that you'll Expand, you may want to find just someplace else that may be a better fit for that. So I don't know if anybody's talked to anyone about the building and where it's supposed to be at. They may want to have a conversation about that. So I don't have to let the time run out. I talk all day. I'm good. But I just wanted to let you know that we are in the building, and we service Tulsa Public Schools children who have IEPs and 504s. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Mr. Andrew McCray.
Good evening, Tulsa School Board, Madam President, Dr. Gist, and concerned citizens of Tulsa. I stand before you tonight humbly to ask for the opportunity to partner. There's been a lot of discussion, and you have a comprehensive plan to do what we have done historically, and that's deliver for Tulsa kids. You're right, Ms. Shelton, we had a choice. But we came to you to partner with you because we value this relationship and because we love Tulsa kids just as much as you do. You know, the last time I stood up here, a man I greatly respect, Mr. Bright, said it was a short walk for KIP Tulsa. But I guarantee you, the walk was not short. It was an earned walk. A walk earned over 12 years. A walk earned over students like Isaac, who stood up here tonight. The product of our work. But really, it's not about any of that. Because if it was about academics, we wouldn't be having this discussion. It's about philosophy. We have the opportunity here tonight to make a choice, to say, "Are we willing to work with a proven, committed, dedicated partner to give students more opportunity? Students and families who are asking for it? With someone who has proven to deliver, who has proven to be a partner, and who has done nothing but meet and exceed the bar wherever you choose to put it? Or do we accept the status quo?" Those are the hard, the simple truths. Tonight, we stand here committed. We are as committed as we were in 2005 when a small group of parents, educators, and community leaders brought KIP to Tulsa and believed that we could do something different. We don't ever pretend to be the only solution, but we believe that we can be a part of it. We're not asking you for anything but the opportunity to help more. We're asking you for the opportunity to do more. We're asking you to step up to a problem that so many of us know exists, and we've proven to be effective at solving. All I can ask tonight is that you continue to partner with us. Continue to work with us. We are as committed as we've ever been. We are steadfast in the belief that no matter who you are, no matter where you're from, you deserve the opportunity to attain an excellent education, and that education can and should be in the neighborhood that you are from. We're asking you to partner with us to prove the possible. You did it once in 2005, and we ask you to do it again tonight. Thank you.
Thank you to all of our speakers this evening. Just quickly, I am, as a chair of the Portfolio Committee, I did attend the meeting last week, and we were shared there. Mr. McCray shared an address with us there, and I think the negotiations around the lease are still ongoing. So it's... But all of the board members are aware of the building. With that, unless there's further comment, I am going to call for a motion on item F1.
We already have one.
We have... Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot. We have a motion. I'll go ahead and call for the vote, and I will begin with Ms. Shelton.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. No? Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Thank you all. Thank you for being here. Look forward to the continued partnership with KIP. And I hope, as Ms. Shelton mentioned, whatever best practices that you're developing, that you'll continue to share and partner with us in sharing those with our Tulsa Schools as well. And look forward to seeing your results. Move to the information agenda. And I will turn that portion of it, of our meeting, over to Dr. Gist.
Thank you, Madam President. Just as a reminder, information items come before the Board for their consideration and discussion. They are not acted upon during the meeting in which they're discussed, but rather would come before the Board at a future meeting on either the consent agenda or the action agenda. Item G1 is a routine contract with Banks Entertainment to provide DJ services for the East Central High School Senior Prom. And our Chief of Schools, Dr. Green, is available to answer any questions if you should have them.
Is he gonna play good music?
I've heard it on Good Authority that yes, they will.
Items G2 and G3 will be presented by our Chief Information Analytics Officer, Steven Fedor. Mr. Fedor.
Thank you Superintendent Gist, President Schreiber, members of the Board. Item G2 is a recommendation to enter into a contract with Thoughtbot Incorporated out of Boston, Massachusetts for the period of March 6th. I'm sorry, that will be edited for that information. So, that's March 15th is what that should read. 2018 through February 28th, 2019 for consulting and technical expertise regarding data dashboard development at a cost not to exceed $350,000. The purpose of this contract is to enter, is to work with Thoughtbot to develop dashboards that teachers and school leaders have asked for. As we've rolled out dashboards, the user base continues to grow. And with that, the demand for the tools and resources are growing as well. Partnering with Thoughtbot will allow the data team to speed up the development of the dashboards, allowing us to build new features for teachers, support staff, and school leaders faster than our current capacity allows for. Thoughtbot uses a center, user-centered design approach that's very similar to the work that the data team does. So, it'll be a perfect fit in that sense. Further, Thoughtbot has produced top-quality user-driven applications for hundreds of organizations over the past 12 years. And their partnership with us will help to build the capacity for Tulsa Public Schools employees, specifically on the data team. This grant fund is from the Wallace Foundation and is specifically for this type of work to build out data tools for teachers and school leaders. So, it's a perfect fit for this work. Happy to answer any questions on that item specifically.
Ms. Shelton.
Mr. Fedor, could you clarify? I know we approved a contract a couple of months ago with a group that would provide extra help with developers if we just needed more, like, staff capacity for developing new tools. Could you clarify the value add of Thoughtbot?
Yeah, correct. So, the item that you're referring to is Upwork Enterprises. And that board item is for partnership with individuals who have very discreet, very technical skills for ad hoc support. So, in the event that we have a bug that means that teachers, school leaders can't get onto the dashboard and we need immediate, rapid support to get the system back up and running, we reach out to someone in that case. Or, in the event that there's something that's very specific and very, very technical, where it doesn't make sense to have something in-house, we reach out to them. Thoughtbot, the major difference here is they will take on, we have about a list of just right around 50 feature requests. These are requests that come from principals, teachers, counselors, for things that they would like to see in the dashboard. We've heard a lot of information of, "This is great, could you also do this?" And the answer is yes. We'll put on our list. That list has grown to about 50 items. So, Thoughtbot will come in, identify the item, and they'll work from start to finish building out that item as opposed to solving singular technical issues.
Thank you.
Mr. Fedor, when this comes for action, would it be possible to have some of those specific requests that you could articulate or possibly even the requesting parties speak to us regarding those?
Absolutely. Happy to bring that for the next board meeting when we bring it for consent. To give just a quick example, a principal reached out, this must be about three or four weeks ago, asking for a relatively simple and straightforward report. That's called a DF report. To understand in high school for students who are ineligible for athletics or approaching ineligibility for athletics. That takes quite a bit of time to run in power school, which is the current system it's running, to just have that, so click of a button. That's one simple example. But happy to bring more examples and have some of the end users who've requested those things for our next meeting. So, definitely get that set up.
Excellent. And one final question, just remind us about the Wallace Grant in total.
Yes, so, this Wallace Grant was an earlier Wallace Grant. So, it's a little bit confusing because there, there's a Wallace Grant for principal supports and principal data use. That is what this is referring to. There's a more recent Wallace Grant around social-emotional learning supports that is not part of this. So, the Wallace Grant as a whole, I honestly couldn't tell you the total amount of it. There was about $500,000 committed to using data as a strategic asset in the building. And that's what this money is coming out of, that specific line item.
Thank you.
And moving on to item G3. G3 is to extend the collaboration with the Data Science for Social Good Team at the University of Chicago from March 15th, 2018 through December 31st, 2019. The original collaboration was approved on May 16th of 2016. It was Agenda Item E3 then. Extending this agreement will allow us to continue working with Data Science for Social Good to gain important education data resources while also being able to share nationally the work and progress being made in the district to provide early identification of students who may fall behind academically, focused somewhat on an early warning indicator at the early grades. Happy to answer any questions you may have on item G3. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fedor, and thank you, board members, for those questions and clarifications and comments. Item G4 is a routine item requesting approval of sanctioning of booster clubs and parent-teacher associations in accordance with Board Policy 5707. And Chief DeDio is ready to respond to any questions that board members may have about that item. Items G5 through G6 will be presented by our Executive Director of Bond Projects and Energy Management, Chris Hudgens. Mr. Hudgens.
Thank you, Dr. Gist, President Schreiber, and board members. Item G5 is to approve a ground lease with the city of Tulsa for 9.62 acres of land. And that's located 3121 East Queen's Place, which is, which is just located west of the Celia Clinton Elementary School. And so, with the, this land is currently on a, is currently used as a park by the city of Tulsa. And this is going to allow for the construction of our EduCare4 facility. And they will be serving approximately 160 childrens from birth to four years old. Item G5 is to approve a lease purchase agreement with George Kaiser Family Foundation for the construction of the EduCare4. The total construction project is going to cost approximately $12 million. $6 million is going to be coming from our current 2015 bond issue, of which those funds will not be available till August. So, to allow for construction to start in the April, May of 2018, we're going to approve this lease purchase. It's going to be without any interest. And then, after the funds are received, this is contingent on the selling receipt of our August 2018 B funds. Then, that lease purchase will be paid off. And this facility is scheduled to open July of 2019. Are there any questions over either one of these items?
And that item on EduCare is actually G6.
I'm sorry.
Dr. Gist, I do think, just to remind the public a little bit about what an EduCare is and that we partner with EduCare throughout the city at four, well, this will be our fourth site, but three of them. And what the model is and how students are, or children are eligible to enter in EduCare. And if we don't have the specifics on that now, we can always get them before the vote. But some of those details, I think, just to remind the public.
Absolutely. So, EduCare provides very high-quality, early childhood education. We work in very close partnership with the three EduCare's we have currently in place. I actually think it'd be wonderful to have representatives from the organization come. We could even do that as a staff presentation or something along those lines. Because I'm sure, even as an early childhood educator, I wouldn't do it justice in terms of really sharing the full model. But very positive work happening, renowned, carefully studied, really strong outcomes on behalf of kids. So, we can bring that information to you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Hudgens.
Thank you.
Item G7 requests approval of a routine licensing agreement that will allow campus police to access criminal justice information throughout the Oklahoma law enforcement telecommunications system. When investigating incidences, campus police will be able to immediately view up-to-date and relevant information on individuals involved, allowing them to respond accordingly. And so, we have our Chief Operations Officer, Chief Information Operations Officer, Blaine Young, available to answer any questions you may have.
Quickly, is this a practice that we've engaged in in the past, this sharing? Is this new?
It's new in the way that it's being used by campus police, but it is a practice that campus police does today. They do it in partnership with Tulsa Police Department. Some months ago, we bought before this board an acquisition of a new records management system for our campus police department that will allow them to have richer access to data, more real-time access to data for each of the calls that our campus police responds to. This allows that part of the process to be strengthened in real-time access for our officers.
Thank you, Mr. Young. And also, just want to pause and say thank you to Mr. Young. This is actually his last Board of Education meeting as he's moving on to a new opportunity. We are extraordinarily grateful for your incredible work, your strong leadership, and everything you have done for Tulsa Public Schools for many years now. So, thank you so, so much, and we wish you all the best and look forward to staying in touch with you and your new, new chapter in your life. Thank you. Item G8 is a recommendation for name changes of specific schools. This is work that has emerged from work that's been happening over a number of months, including the work of the Community Advisory Council and their report on school names. We actually have a PowerPoint presentation to share with you to talk a little bit about the process and the, and the names themselves. So, you'll remember that back in the early part of the fall, we charged the Community Advisory Council with this effort. This was a pre-existing group that has worked with the Board and served in so many ways to provide feedback and also to share two-way communication with the public on the district as a whole. And we asked them to set aside a few months to focus more specifically on this particular effort. And the great majority of them agreed to do that, even though it meant a significant increase in the amount of time they were spending. And they dove in and did really important work from October to January. Meeting monthly, but including a lot of work in between those meetings. They had a variety of discussions and compiled research. In January, they shared the original draft of the historical profiles on our schools to the public for community comment to make sure that we had gotten it right. We wanted to make sure that we were historically accurate and also had a balanced view. And then, in February, the Community Advisory Council, was that just the last meeting? Presented the report to the Board of Education. And we appreciated that work and spent then time after that and before, because of course, we had information as we moved along, to develop the recommendations that I'm bringing before the Board today. So, in sharing with you what we considered as we were looking at the historical profiles, I want to talk a little bit about that. What we did when we were looking at the various namesakes of our schools was we looked at whether or not the individual for whom the school was named had engaged in an act of violence. And we use that word in a broad term. Sometimes it meant actual physical violence. In other cases, it might have been intellectual or cultural or economic acts of violence against others. And it might have been an individual or a small group. But then, we also looked at whether or not the person was an architect more broadly of unjust practices. So, rather than in the first set of, in the first question, a direct act, act. The second act meant that in addition to that, or more broadly, an act that was against a larger group that was contributing to systemic unjust practices. And then, lastly, we looked at whether their legacy had a clear contribution to the inequity experienced by our youth today. In other words, did the work of this person in the development of unjust practices create systemic inequities that contributed to institutionalized racism or other things that exist in our world today, in our community today, that are continuing to have an impact on members of our community? And I would also say that the, going back for just a second, that the balanced view was something that was very important. So, we, there are a number of folks, if you, if you read the profiles, who, if you could, you could look at this and you could say, there are other folks who are not on the list who, who did things that were unjust. And in some cases, things that we would find abhorrent. But we also looked at the balance of that person's contributions to the world. So, if they had other acts of leadership or parts of their life that contributed in positive ways to the world, we considered that in a more balanced view. And it was really difficult, I will, I will tell you, it was extraordinarily difficult to determine where to draw that line. And during the Community Advisory Council, we talked a lot about that this is a line-drawing process, that we all know that we would draw that line somewhere, about who we would honor to have on the name of a school building. So, the question is, where do you draw that line? Because there are many folks who, who did things that, whose names are not on the list who were, that were problematic. But we, you know, used these questions as guides. And we also used all of the work that happened during the work of the Community Advisory Council and everything we learned to, to make a decision that was not rash, that was not expansive, that was measured. There are folks, we may not, I mean, in fact, I would say that we wouldn't name a school after some folks today. But there was a big difference between that versus removing a name that's been in place over, in most cases, many decades. So, you're familiar with the list that's been shared publicly. Shoto Elementary School, Columbus Elementary School, Jackson Elementary School, Lee Elementary School, and Ford, which is a not very well-known vacant lot at 61st Street North and Delaware. So, with that, I just want to see if board members have any questions or, or comments about that.
Dr. Gist, if the names of these buildings were to change, is there a cost estimate of what it would take to make that happen at each location?
There is, but there are a lot of things that we have to consider about that, including what the, what the new name would be. So, in some instances, members of the community have ideas that might mean that the, that the name that you see on the screen might not change, but perhaps the namesake would change and that would change the cost itself. But if we were to do a, a complete change, it ranges. It could be as little as $2,500 or $5,000, especially at Shoto, Columbus, and Jackson. The Lee facility is a little bit different because of its historical nature of the building. It has parts of the name that are a part of the structure. And so, there are just some things that are different about that one. But for the most part, with the ones at the top, it is $5,000 approximately or less.
And would we be using district funds?
No, we've made a commitment that- No, we've made a commitment that, because we know that, you know, not everyone is supportive of this effort, and we have limited public dollars, that we would not use district dollars in the public sense in any way for this effort.
Dr. Decker.
Would we be removing the name from ever being visible to the students there, or would they learn the history of the name change?
Yeah, one of the things that we talked about with the Community Advisory Council is this notion of erasing history. I think there's some sense among people that if you, if you believe that someone does not deserve the honor of being on a school and held up in that way, which is honoring them, that somehow that's erasing history. And we've talked about that quite significantly and feel very strongly that that's absolutely not the case, that, that there are figures in history that have done amazing and positive things and horrible and troublesome and terrible things. And they still are, remain in history, and we, and most people are, like all of us, incredibly complex, and we make good choices and bad choices, and are, are not good or evil, but rather human. And so we have a commitment, and are still figuring out exactly what that looks like, to make sure that, that we memorialize this moment in time, to say that there was a decision that was made, the school's name was this, named after this person. It was changed for these reasons with the, with the core values of Tulsa Public Schools at the heart and what those were, and then document whatever the local community recommends to the board in terms of a new name for the school, and document that as well. We've also talked with the Tulsa Historical Society about this memorialization, and they're very interested in supporting us with that, and, and including that if there are artifacts that don't have another place to be, or we don't think need to be at the school or whatnot, that they would be willing to take those and have them in their archives.
Ms. Faith.
Yes, Dr. Gist, can you tell us what, if we approve this, what would be the next steps? How do we go about renaming?
Right. So the, the way that, the, the board policy is very clear, that the community at the school plays a lead role in the development of, or the creation of a recommendation for the board. So it says that the board member who's, in whose district the school is located, leads an ad hoc committee that is comprised of, at minimum, I don't remember the exact list, but it's a teacher, a student, an alum, a district person, et cetera, and, you know, obviously would also include the school leader, and, and it does, it's not limited to just those folks, but there would be a committee that, that the board member would convene, and those folks would develop a recommendation to the board for the new name, and the board would then act upon that new name.
We have a few speakers on this, this evening. If there's no further comment or question from the board, we'll begin with Ms. Autumn Wharton.
I'm going to start off by saying I'm thankful-
Just a minute. Oh, there you go. Your mic's on.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm so grateful, along with many fellow parents, for Tulsa Public Schools' intentionality and courage in identifying and reviewing the names of all of the TPS schools. I'm also thankful for district and school leadership, willing to have hard conversations with folks that fall across many different opinions on the school renaming continuum. I'm thankful to every member of the committee who developed the report on school names, which I'm sure after reading all 193 pages, required a very deep level of personal commitment to this process. As a parent of a student at Lee, I want what most people want for their kids. I want my child to be happy, to be healthy, to be curious, and to be kind. I looked for those qualities when searching for the perfect school for my child. She also happens to be multiracial, so I wanted her to be able to really explore and appreciate both her African-American, her white, and her Native American heritage in a very inclusive and diverse environment. What I found at Lee was a strong community of involved parents, incredible student-centered learning opportunities for my curious kid, and even more recently, a new commitment to social and emotional learning. The vision of this school is to teach, learn, and communicate in a collaborative and mutually respectful community. Mutual respect can be defined as a feeling that something or someone is good, valuable, and important. This means that we care for each other's feelings and thoughts. When we began our time at the school, I realized a strong misalignment between what I was experiencing and what was represented in the namesake. Those against changing the name of Robert E. Lee Elementary are saying that the naming of the, of the school would be erasing history, and I really beg to differ. As one of the oldest, if not the oldest continuously operating elementary schools in the state of Oklahoma, we will be commemorating our centennial celebration in just a few short months. This is not about changing history. It's about who we want to be now that we know better. It is so that those babies who are lined up under a picture of Robert E. Lee with Confederate flags feel empowered and encouraged by a city willing to say enough. The time is, is now, and it's not a Band-Aid solution. The history of this great school has nothing to do with the name. It has to do with the people, the people who have graduated from there, who have gone on to serve our community and other communities across the world and changed countless lives. It's about the people. Robert E. Lee himself opposed monuments and memorials in his name because of the divisive environment it would create. Names matter. Who we choose to honor matters. It is very different from history. School names contribute to school, school culture, whether a school chooses this deliberately and purposefully or ignores the history of its namesake, the history remains part of its identity. We now have a unique opportunity to be bold and to be brave. We have seen the successes and failures of name changes across the country and even here in Tulsa. Let's have the courage to get it right. The dropping of Robert E. is a missed opportunity and frankly is not good enough for our children. I implore you to dig deeper, to search for a real solution to celebrate the centennial of this Tulsa gem, after all the babies are watching us.
Mr. Larry Williamson.
Hi, I'm Larry Williamson. I come to speak to oppose the superintendent's agenda, item G8, to rescind the names of these four schools. And I would say, after watching the presentation, the lofty goals of the mission of your committee notwithstanding, I think this whole process would have never been undertaken, would have not even been conceived if it were not for a headlong rush in the last, about a year to two years ago, to remove the names of anyone associated with the Confederate States of America from, from any public place in the United States. And I'll speak more specifically to the, to the event in Virginia, but, and that was an unfortunate event. But I, I'm here to say that I believe this initiative, if you really look at it, at its, the principles at its depth, this initiative is one of pure racism, to accomplish a political twofold purpose. And that's by removing, by removing the names of as many old white men as possible from public places in our community. The idea is to dishonor the contribution of old white men and their godly values, many of them are Christians, as we know, to the founding and development. Was I snickering at some of y'all when you spoke? I'm sorry. I don't think I did. By dishonoring the contribution of, of old white men and their godly values to the founding of our state and nation and to the development of our prosperity, our liberties, and the opportunities of our state and nation. You know, racism is nothing more or less than making much of race. And sitting here this evening, I've heard a whole lot of racism. Racism is just as ugly in 2018 as it was 100 years ago or 200 years ago. It's wrong, 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 no matter who's practicing it. But Marxists continue, still continue to use racism to accomplish their political agenda. Marxists say, never let a crisis go to waste. And Superintendent Gist is not wanting to let an unpleasant event that took place 1,200 miles away, that took place 1,200 miles from here in Virginia last year, go by without accomplishing some leftist political outcome here. I think if a review of the, of the personal lives of George Washington Carver or Booker T. Washington, who I believe to be great men, but if a review of their personal lives reveals some minor imperfection, and a group of school patrons were calling for the renaming of Carver or Booker T. Washington schools, I think we would be seeing a response from the superintendent, the board, and the Tulsa world, very different from the response they've given to the proposal to remove the great names of Christopher Columbus, Robert E. Lee, Jean Pierre Chateau, and Andrew Jackson from our schools. If these men's contribution to the development of our state and nation and the improvement of the quality of life in this place, as compared with what it was 500 years previously, if their contributions aren't recognized as being great, then the scholarship done in studying this proposal to remove, to rename these schools just has not been adequate. I'd like to speak a little bit to the specific greatness of these men. I've, I've seen some of this kind of process to remove names done with like zero scholarship. There's just no time here. But Christopher Columbus was a scientist. He was a very modern man. He was an explorer. He was a Christian missionary. And I, I just, I would truly like to know how many of you board members have read Washington Irving's biography of Christopher Columbus? That was a serious scholarly undertaking that Washington Irving made in studying Columbus. And anyone who believes that Christopher Columbus came to the Americas to kill Indians and plunder their gold needs to be learning their history from somewhere other than Disney movies, because that is not a source of good scholarship. Yeah, Robert E. Lee was a Renaissance man. He was a decorated officer during the Mexican-American War. He was an army engineer who helped oversee the construction of the St. Louis levee. He was a superintendent of the U.S. Military Academy. He was a statesman, a farmer, and he had a very hard decision to make at the beginning of the Civil War. He was torn by that, but he chose to, to fight to defend the Constitution and his native state and his state sovereignty. And as soon as the war was over, he supported Virginia's ratification of the 13th Amendment. He was an educator. He was the president of Washington University, who went on later to rename, you know, rename its school with his name in it.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. I'll call our next speaker, Ms. Sarah Doherty.
Good evening, Superintendent and board members. My name is Sarah Doherty, and I'm a parent of two TPS students. One child attends Lee School, and another is a Lee alum and attends a TPS middle school. I'm speaking to you tonight as the chairwoman of the Lee Centennial Committee. Lee School was established in September 1918. We are 99 years old and look to the coming year to celebrate our centennial. We have the distinction of being the oldest continuously operating school in the state of Oklahoma. We want to celebrate this milestone by taking a look at the history of Lee School and public education over the past 100 years. Our current plans include the creation of a traveling museum-quality exhibit that will include artifacts, costumes, and photographs. This exhibit will be featured at the Tulsa Historical Society, Lee School, and the Oklahoma State Capitol. In addition, we hope to create a documentary, which will be discussed by one of our committee members this evening. We plan to create many memory markers for our students to commemorate the events of the year and mark the start of the next 100 years. The school's birthday will feature an opportunity for students to learn about Lee School history and dress like it's 1918. The day will feature visits from local dignitaries to honor the occasion. We will have a reunion weekend with alumni, currently families, neighbors, and friends to celebrate our past, present, and future. On the 100th day of school, all Lee students will have a field trip to the Oklahoma State Capitol in conjunction with the display of the traveling exhibit to visit and perform for elected and public education officials. We've partnered with local universities and historical and preservation societies to research and present Lee's history in an accurate, authentic, and transparent manner. We believe this is an opportunity to explore and to celebrate Lee School and public education in a time when it is desperately needed. In the early 20th century, during the planning of new Tulsa Public Schools, Lee School was initially known as the Southside School. The start of the school year was plagued by the 1918 flu epidemic, and we've recently wondered if the flu is having its own centennial anniversary this year. That same year, the United States was in World War I. It was a time of massive growth in Tulsa and the state of Oklahoma. Public education was only 20 years at the time in Tulsa. Lee alums have shared stories with their children of their experiences growing up in Tulsa during the Tulsa Race Massacre, of air raid drills during World War II, and growing up during the Cold War. Many Tulsans recall attending football games at Lee Stadium, where children now play in our outdoor classroom, Discover Lee. Lee School has a history of perseverance. Twice, the school was in danger of being torn down. In each of these instances, Lee parents and the surrounding neighborhood fought to preserve the historic school. But a school with a 99-year-old history survives not because the building housing it is built to last. It survives because it changes and adapts to the times. Today, Lee School embraces our diversity, which is represented by race, but also by socioeconomic status as a Title I school. Due to the quality of education and enhancement such as the title, such as the Discover Lee Outdoor Classroom, we have a waiting list for students and teachers. Because of our commitment to equity for every child, Lee remains a leader in public education in this city and state. Our school has been under a lot of scrutiny this past year. It has not been an easy year, but we've had thoughtful conversations and continued reflection on our practices and how we are conveying our school to our internal and external communities. In the distant and even recent past, our school's made affirmative changes and progress in addressing what may have been a central figure in our school's history by changing mascots, songs, and traditions. Lee School has become its own central figure in this narrative. We are a community within a community. We care for each other, inspire each other, and work together to create a community that includes our alumni, our hard-working teachers, faculty and staff, our dedicated parent volunteers, and our precious students. The Tulsa community knows us as Lee School. We have an opportunity to officially affirm Lee School as our name, as a viable approach that addresses concerns of the past, yet not lose the history and legacy of this Tulsa institution. This is an instance where changing a name does erase history. Let us continue the work of reconciling our past, present, and future. I believe our Lee School community has proven we are up to this challenge. We have a story to tell. We have a past to explore, a present to celebrate, and a future that is bright. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Carrie Alexander.
Thank you, board, and Dr. Gist and guests. My name's Carrie Alexander, and I'm a Lee parent as well as a parent of a Booker T. graduate. As part of the Centennial Committee, I'd like to introduce the project overview of the Centennial Documentary. Chronicling a century of public education nurtured by Tulsans, Lee School aims to celebrate a steadfast commitment of a neighborhood school that built a 100-year kinship. Just months preceding the end of World War I, Lee School opened and welcomed her first class in the spring, or in the January of 1918. The corner of Cincinnati and 21st Street became a home of education and community spirit. 19th and 20th Street sidewalks saw countless souls walk to and from school for classes, football games, sock hops, PTA meetings, picnics, and talent shows. "It seems like I've been going to school here all my life," said Catherine Brownfield, a 1933 graduate who saw three generations of her family graduate from Lee. Facing decades that would see the Great Depression, numerous wars, and the Great Recession, Lee, Oklahoma's oldest continuing-operating school, has been a beacon and a testament to the human spirit and unwavering, equitable, sustainable access to public education, learning, and opportunity. In 2018, Oklahoma suffers a public education funding crisis that has led to overloaded class sizes, a teacher shortage, and disappearing art and foreign language programs. Neighboring districts are moving to four-day school weeks to save money, and teachers are leaving in droves to find higher pay. Despite the dismal forecast for Oklahoma schools, Lee pushes forward and continues to stand tall as an incubator for Tulsa's tomorrow, for tomorrow, sorry, tomorrow's innovators. Her most recent years brought Discover Lee, the first privately-funded outdoor classroom, and a new marketplace, makerspace, a design and engineering hub where students can invent, experiment, and offer new solutions to their own community. This September, octogenarians will gather with eight-year-olds to celebrate the centennial anniversary. anniversary of this exceptional citizenry. First graders will squirt their grandparents through Mrs. H.'s gym down to their favorite classroom. Parents will gather, just as they do every Friday morning, for coffee and stories of the weeks past and ahead. Alumni from the class of 1933 will visit the Children's Forest and Water Labs in the outdoor classroom. The feature-length film, Lee School, challenges the notion that public education in Oklahoma has been abandoned. It tells the story of commitment, hard work, self-sacrifice, and tethering to one's community through interviews with Lee alumni in their 80s, their eight-year-old predecessors, historians, and neighbors. Directed by Melissa Lukinbaugh, Lee School parent, the film reveals an intimate portrait of resiliency, featuring interviews with students, teachers, parents, and alumni holding Lee as vital to the Tulsa landscape and future of the public education in Oklahoma. Together with Fire Thief Productions, Lee School unearths a colorful history that's transparent and predicts the way forward for the next 100 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions on any of the information items this evening? With that, we'll move to Board Member -- excuse me, Staff Reports. Dr. Gist, are there any Staff Reports this evening?
We do not have any additional Staff Reports tonight, Madam President.
From there, we'll move to Board Member Reports and Concerns.
Well, so G9 was included in the presentations. So G9 is specifically the lot, so yeah, G8 and G9, I think, as long as everyone's comfortable with that. Thank you. Board Clerk Hutchings.
Thank you. I will call for Board Member Reports and Concerns, but I want to begin with a letter provided to me as the Board President by Board Member Percival in regards to the recommendation of G8 and G9, and this one specifically pertains to Lee. And I'm just going to go ahead and read the recommendation into the record. "In recent years, symbols of the historic Confederate States of America have been used by white supremacists and hate groups and brought into the question the relevance of their use today by legitimate public entities, especially those that place a high value on diversity and inclusion. This includes the naming of buildings and other public infrastructures for Confederate General Robert E. Lee. In 1918, a newly constructed Tulsa school was named for Robert E. Lee. The reason appears to have been associated with the fact that the annual reunion of the United Confederate Veterans was being held in Tulsa contemporaneously with the opening of the 1918 school year and the new school. It was a huge event for the young city, drawing 40,000 visitors, and was commemorated by special editions of the newspaper, large parades, and other public events, and the use of the district's high school to house many of the visitors. Robert E. Lee Elementary School is the only TPS building ever named for a Confederate leader, and there is no other local public asset named for him or other Confederate leaders making it unique in our community. Last year, after violent events associated with the proposed removal of a statue honoring Lee in other locations, a petition was circulated demanding the Tulsa school be renamed. This sparked debate across our community and specifically within the Lee Elementary School community. Ironically, the Lee Elementary School community, led by the Lee Foundation and Lee PTA, were beginning to lay plans for a school centennial celebration in September 2018. This event is seen as especially significant, as Lee is the oldest continuously operating public school in the original building in the entire state. The conversations among the Lee School community continued as your advisory council considered the background of the names of all TPS buildings in the district brought our core value of equity to the forefront with the Exploring Equity Community conversations. Based on numerous conversations over the past six months with parent groups and individuals associated currently with Lee School, I believe there is a wide consensus to remove the symbols and imagery representing Robert E. Lee as the namesake of the school property and to rededicate the site as Lee School in conjunction with the centennial ceremonies. The school community this year, under the leadership of new Principal Aubrey Flowers, has articulated values of the school consistent with those of the district expressed in our Destination Excellence Strategic Plan. The name and surname Lee is and has been widely used and is tied to a number of historical and contemporary figures and is seen alone as representing a wide diversity of people and American culture and invites consideration of the diversity of our nation. The transition to Lee School, away from honoring Robert E. Lee specifically, will represent the evolution of the values important to our nation, community, and school district. I request that the name Robert E. Lee Elementary School be rescinded and the school be renamed Lee School in accordance with the TPS Policy 8102, and also that all references honoring Robert E. Lee as the school's original namesake be removed and returned to their owners or transferred to an appropriate repository of historical artifacts. I am prepared to recommend participants for the Ad-Hoc Committee in accordance with Policy 8102. Sincerely, Gary Percival." So regarding the Ad-Hoc Committee, based on Dr. Gist's recommendations in this portion of the meeting, I had planned to ask Board Member Percival, Board Member Marshall, and Board Member Keller to prepare their Ad-Hoc Committees and gather them in the event that on the March 15th meetings the names are rescinded by a vote of the Board. So I will go ahead and request that the Board Members gather those committees so that they can have their conversations. Ms. Keller is the Board Member for Columbus, I'm sorry. Mr. Percival for Lee and Chateau, and Ms. Marshall has Jackson in her district. So with that, we will convene those committees, and the policy provides who the members shall be. And again, they bring a nomination or additional nominations around what the school should be named. With that, I have one other report quickly. As you all will recall, when we re-elected Ms. Keller to the Board, and I was also re-elected at that time, we were required to reorganize, and Dr. Decker became the Vice President, and we had a few changes in our committee structure at that time, swapping a few things around based on the desires of the Board, and also to accommodate for the extra time that is spent during your Board Leadership tenure. So quickly, just so everybody knows, I'll go ahead and read all of the Committees that we have and the Board Members for that. So Teaching and Learning is chaired by Dr. Decker, and she's joined by Ms. Fait and Ms. Shelton. Talent Management is now chaired by Ms. Marshall, and I will join her on that Committee as well as Ms. Fait. The Policy Committee is chaired by Ms. Fait, and Ms. Keller and Ms. Shelton join her there. Operations and Facilities and Surplus Property is chaired by Ms. Keller, and she's joined by Ms. Marshall and Mr. Percival there. Finance is chaired by Mr. Percival, and Dr. Decker and Ms. Shelton join him. And the Portfolio Committee is chaired by me and Ms. Marshall and Mr. Percival join me there. The Committee's structure of working through a lot of the issues that you all see come to the Board, and you may not see them in their full relief because we're working out a lot of the kinks and details there, but I encourage you all to contact either the Board Chair or any Board Member if you have things that you want to discuss that pertain to those specific topics. I will call on other Board Members. Mr. Percival.
Thank you, President Schreiber. I'd like to give a brief report from the Finance Committee. We met last week, and I know recently in the news that we read that there had been some proposed cuts to the state budget, and I wanted to share an update on the impact of those cuts to the district. We're expecting about a $1 million shortfall from these latest cuts, but because of the decline in funding in recent years, our finance team had been planning for cuts, particularly during the mid-year allocation. So although these cutbacks in December weren't as large as anticipated, the new proposed cuts under the fiscal year 18 state budget will basically account for what we had originally planned for. So it turns out that we're pretty close on target. In April, when the mid-year budget submission is made, we'll have more details to share. And so at this point, we don't require any action, but we may later in the school year.
Thank you, Mr. Percival. Other reports? Ms. Keller.
It's not so much a report, because unfortunately, I was unable to make the Facilities and Operations Committee meeting this week, but I'm very sad because it was Mr. Young's last meeting, and I wanted to echo Dr. Gist's sentiments in how much he will be missed and how much we appreciate his amazing service to TPS. So Blaine, please know that you leave giant shoes to fill, and we wish you nothing but the best in your next steps.
Before we move to Citizens' comments, I just want to say thank you to all of my fellow Board Members. I think it's evident here tonight that everyone is working very, very hard and working through these difficult issues that we face as an urban school district and really wanting to get things right and serve the public and listen and consider everything. I think each of us recently have had an opportunity to really search what we believe our role is about, and so I want to thank everyone here at the Board Table this evening for all of their effort. And I know they'll get back right up tomorrow and continue with that. I also want to thank the public, who has been deeply engaged over the past several months, just really pushing us to think and respond, and there's always a contingent that is doing that, but it has grown, and it's a great thing to see people engaging in local democracy. Really, as many emails I have to respond to, I still love it. So thank you all for being a partner with us as we do this work. I'm very grateful to everyone. And with that, I'll move to Citizen Comments, and we do have Mr. Bright, who will be speaking this evening regarding the McLean 7th Grade Academy in McLean Junior High. Mr. Bright.
Madam President, Board Members, Dr. Gist. Thank you, Dr. Gist, for your response. Thank you, Dr. Gist. Appreciate your response to our letter. That letter was over 14 signatures, as you noted, educators, community activists, and religious leaders. And it addressed the need to keep the 7th Grade Academy open and bring over the 8th graders from McLean and make that an 7th and 8th Grade Academy. In your responses, it was quite evident that we need to have a meeting. There were more questions raised as that was read, and we still are yet to meet and really have a full-throated discussion about your response. But we're glad to see that you delved into those details, but we have more questions, and we would like to have a meeting to discuss them further. We cannot obviously continue to exchange that kind of discussion by letters, writing back and forth. We need to sit and talk so that we can have an explanation right there, live time, and at least come to an understanding of our heartfelt need to have those kiddos moved from that 8th Grade Center into a junior high academy for 7th and 8th graders. We must have a deliberate discussion regarding the strengths we think that we have in our proposal and options. That is very necessary, because what was lacking at first glean was an in-kind explanation of why the options were not possible. We need to dig a little deeper in terms of what we see and what you see about those options. We would like to sit down and have a committee come together, you, Madam President, Janetti, Marshall, whomever else, and the individuals who were actually involved, those who signed, some were dealing with developing the options. So we have several levels of individuals who were working on that particular letter. It is important that we really look at that McLean Academy for 7th and 8th graders as something that, with the right resources, with a strategic plan and end in mind for those kiddos who sometimes are coming into 7th and 8th grade, reading well below grade level, and then moving right into McLean, reading five years to maybe even six years below grade level. And we have to stop that. I believe, and we believe, that when we discuss this and we look at the options and the potential right there on that property where Alcott resides at this point, that it is a very short step to having a world-class junior high school. We would also, and we've contended that if we had the kind of money, obviously to remodel Emerson, which was $8 million, you've heard me say this before, we can do wonders. We probably don't even need that much. But we need to have that kind of institution, that kind of academy, that really is like the gleam, the light that we can look at for the development of that whole area. And I think economic development starts with great schools, great schools. And we think we have an opportunity here to make that acreage right there a shining star. And we'd like to talk to you and whomever you as your designees would like to attend. I think we have to have and should have a deliberate discussion about teaching and learning and some of the issues that have haunted us historically, not to rehash old grievances, but to reach a consensus on where we should be today and tomorrow. And I look forward to hearing from you, and we look forward to sitting down and having that kind of discourse. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bright. Just quickly, before I go to Dr. Gist and give her reports and presentations, I want to make sure I specifically call out the parents of TPS students and all the PTAs who have also definitely put in their time recently with us. Just this afternoon, we had the Tulsa Area PTA representative with us regarding the teacher advocacy and legislative efforts. So I just didn't want to forget to specifically call out that group, and it's been great to grow that relationship. So thank you. Dr. Gist.
Thank you, Madam President. Couple of things. First, I just wanted to make sure that tonight we took at least a moment to ensure that you know that we are continuing to work very hard on issues around student safety. So we've mentioned before publicly that we have a strong operations plan in place for safety. We have a number of steps that we've taken over the years to continue to improve our safety practices. But given recent events nationally and locally, we have continued to review those practices, and I just wanted to be sure, because it hadn't come up in the meeting tonight, I just wanted to be sure to underscore and let you know that work is continuing on that right now. Members of our team are spending a tremendous amount of time on that, and we will begin to share some things publicly about efforts that we're undertaking so that people will know more specifically what's happening there. Just wanted to make sure that you knew that. The other thing that I wanted to just say is that we have had a conversation tonight in talking about the application for the KIP High School, for the public charter school application, and then other conversations about other partners like Educare, and we also have a partnership for early childhood with CAP. And I just think it's very important to -- I was uncomfortable in the conversation about KIP with some of the talk about the work that's happening in some of our schools and Tulsa public schools. And I want to say this. We have incredible school We have incredible school leaders and teachers in every school in our city, and great work is happening. And I think it's very important to know that while we all acknowledge we are not where we need to be right now, and we have tremendous amount of work to do, that work is happening, and progress is happening. So McLean has been mentioned a number of times tonight, and I want to just remind you we have seen a 12 percentage point increase in the graduation rate at McLean. Attendance is up, the number of students in the school are up, and academic achievement is up. Are we satisfied? Of course, we are not satisfied, but we have incredible teachers who are doing very hard work in very difficult circumstances, and I know that the board joins me in our tremendous appreciation for those educators and their incredible work, and we want to continue working with community and parents and students to keep that improvement happening. So I just wanted to make sure that any conversation we're having about public charter schools does not mean that we are not going to continue extraordinarily hard work to continue improving in our traditional public schools as well. And then lastly, I want to just end where we began, which is this commitment card and the resolution that the board will be acting on. Because for us to be able to best serve our students here in Tulsa and in Oklahoma as a whole, we absolutely must make sure that our teachers are receiving a professional and competitive salary, and we need to do that immediately, and we are going to act absolutely urgently and forcefully to make sure that happens. And so I'm grateful to the board for their leadership. I'm grateful to the Tulsa Classroom Teachers Association and the Oklahoma Educators Association, and I'm grateful to the Tulsa Council of PTAs and the leadership there, as well as the statewide PTAs who are Tulsans and have been involved as well. So thanks for all of that effort, and we will absolutely not rest until we see change. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Gist. We have no nonroutine items this evening, any new business. Thank you. I'll move to announcements. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education will be held on Thursday, March 15th, 2018, at 6:30 PM in the Shell Selman Room at the Education Service Center, 3027 South New Haven Avenue, Tulsa, Oklahoma. I just want to pause there. That is on a Thursday. The following week is spring break, and so we want to do this when kids and parents and people are in town, so we move the meeting up so that we don't do it during spring break. So just make note of that, everyone, and of course, it's posted on our website. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Second. I'll call for the vote. Ms. Shelton.
Aye.
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 Aye. Meeting adjourned.